Go ahead, Dan.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you for viewing the, what is it, June 8th, 2021, meeting of the Arcata Planning Commission. We are holding this meeting as a webinar in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. I want to start by thanking the community and visit-
Oh, you muted.
Sorry about that. I want to start by thanking the community and visitors to Arcata and the county for their efforts to slow the spread of the COVID-19. Remember, the three most important things you can do to protect yourself and others in the community are masking up, practicing social distance of six feet or more, and washing your hands regularly. These fundamental acts of social responsibility will help flatten the curve, keep ourselves and neighbors healthy, and keep our businesses open. Importantly, these measures show support for frontline and essential workers that serve us daily. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting, there are two ways to do so. First, if you join the webinar on a computer or similar device, click the raised hand icon. When the commission is discussing the agenda item on which you would like to speak, when it is time for public comment on that item, the clerk will unmute you. You will have two minutes to comment. If you did, if you did, uh, did not log to the webinar, you may join the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen, enter meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen, press star nine on your phone when the commission is discussing the agenda item on which you would like to speak. Dialing star nine will let the clerk know that you would like to speak. When it is time for public comment on that item, the clerk will unmute you. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted. You will have two minutes to comment. And I will call this meeting to order. Can we begin with a roll call?
Yeah, Commissioner White. Commissioner Figueroa.
Present.
Commissioner Barstow.
Here.
Commissioner Visage Elcock.
Here.
Vice Chair Mayor.
Here.
And Chair Tagney.
Here. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll note for the record that Commissioner Davies is not present.
Okay, and our first or item is oral communications. Staff, do we see any oral communications?
Uh, so if anyone has an item that is not on the agenda that they wish to speak about, they can raise their hand now. I'm seeing none.
Okay, we will close oral communications and move on to the consent calendar. And the only item on our consent calendar this evening is to approve the commission minutes for our regular meeting of May 25th, 2021. If we don't have any amendments, do we have a motion to approve?
Almost two minutes as is.
I think two people just did that at the same time. Is that correct? So we have a motion from Judith. Do we have a second from Kimberly?
Absolutely, I will second.
Thank you. Would you like to do a roll call on that?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Figueroa.
Aye.
Commissioner Visage Elcock.
I was absent, so do I abstain, or?
You, you may abstain if you wish, but you can also vote. It's basically accepting the minutes into the record.
Oh, yes. I vote yes.
Uh, Commissioner Barstow.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Mayor.
Aye.
Chair Tagney.
Aye. Thank you. So we will move on now to our public hearing of the evening. And the topic is a modification to the adopted historic landmark ordinance of the Chapman House. Can we have a staff report on that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, Chair and Commissioners, tonight before you is a recommendation to the city council uh, to amend the historic landmark ordinance that was adopted recently for the Chapman House. And so the item before you is to consider the staff report, take public comment, um, and adopt resolution PC 2103, which would make that recommendation. Essentially, you know, I'm gonna boil it down in very basic terms, and then we could talk about what the changes are. But essentially what happened was that, uh, the Hunts came to the city and said, hey, look, we want to take this Chapman House, which, as you may recall, was in quite significant disrepair at the time. Uh, and we want to, you know, reinvest in it and bring it back to its former glory, and maybe go a few steps farther than that. And then, um, you know, and in exchange, we'd like some incentives. The city's land use code has incentives designed to help people maintain, restore and maintain historic properties. And, um, you know, so we worked with the Hunts. One of the incentives was to list a series of uh, land uses that would be effectively in perpetuity allowed, uh, or require use permit, but be allowed on the site. Uh, and then some of the other incentives included a Mills Act contract and et cetera. And so that, that original adoption, uh, when we were taking it through the public process to, to recognize it as a local historic landmark, um, effectively, you know, we discussed the, um, you know, the various, uh, land uses, but the Hunts were really interested in being able to do vacation rentals on the property. Um, and so they wanted to make sure that that was embedded in this ordinance, so that if we ever changed our land use code tables, that, you know, they would still be able to conduct that activity, even if we removed it from the underlying zoning district, or if we changed their zoning district, et cetera. Subsequent to that, we adopted the, uh, short-stay rental ordinance, which requires a permit process, and we did a limitation on the total number of permits that would be allowed under certain conditions. Sorry for this. Assuming the sirens interfered with understanding my, um, me speaking. Um, and so the, um, the ordinance was really, the short-stay rental ordinance was really designed to protect our housing stock, to limit the number of housing units that are built and designed for resident population from converting to, uh, short-stay rental market. And so when we adopted the historic landmark ordinance, we weren't thinking about a short-stay rental ordinance, and so we didn't embed any kind of, you know, condition in there, you know, that would be, uh, you know, subject to a future permit process. And when we adopted the short-stay rental ordinance, we weren't thinking about this recently approved historic landmark and how it would impact that, uh, property. Specifically, the incentive that they had, you know, asked for to ensure that they would have operating revenues to maintain this historic resource. And so when all of the owners of, uh, vacation rentals were notified by the city, hey, you have to come in for this, uh, you know, this permit, you know, the Hunts became quite concerned because effectively, the second ordinance took away the incentive that we gave in the first ordinance. And so what we have before you tonight, uh, as exhibit one to attachment A, is a uh, it actually is labeled Attachment B for some reason. Supposed to be Exhibit One. Uh, Attachment B on page, uh, packet page 11, uh, is a modification to Exhibit Three, which was adopted in Ordinance 1528, which established the historic landmark on the Chapman House. And it essentially modifies the list of allowed uses, identifying vacation rental, um, as a principally permitted use, uh, but then clarifying that it still requires a permit pursuant to, uh, the new short-stay vacation rental ordinance. And then down at the bottom in the bullet list, it says that it allows for up to three vacation rental units that would be operated without, uh, you know, being subject to the cap. So the cap, the city established a cap of 100 units if you don't live on the site or otherwise have long-term tenants. And this would effectively allow them to conduct all three of the units that are on the site as vacation rentals, um, without regard to that cap. Uh, and so what this exemption does, in staff's, uh, opinion, is to give back the incentive that was approved initially through the original, uh, landmark ordinance that was then taken away by the subsequent sh- short-stay rental ordinance. So I'll leave it, leave it there to your questions. Be happy to answer, you know, anything about what I presented here, or what's in the, the ordinance itself. But I also wanted to note that I did email to you a couple of correspondences, one from the applicant's agent, Jill McDonald, who, uh, provided some support for, um, uh, you know, maintaining the vacation rentals on the site. Um, and then we received one from Mike Wilson, which, uh, pointed out some, uh, reasons for perhaps modifying approval by either, uh, time limiting it to say 10 years, um, limiting the, uh, the exemption from the cap to maybe two units as opposed to all three. And, um, you know, some other suggestions there. And so those, those will obviously become part of the record, and we'll publish those in the next staff report. But I did want to make sure that you were attuned to those. Um, I also wanted to, uh, recognize that, you know, there are several historic resources in town that are used for residential uh, uses. Uh, but most of those don't have the same kind of investment or the same, uh, you know, level of input that the Chapman House has. And it's not to say that there aren't some that are very nice, like the Lord House, which is very well-maintained, used for residential development. Uh, but there are several others that, you know, basically when you have a rental, they've, uh, you know, invested the bare minimum to, to ensure that it's, you know, rentable. Um, and so this, this project potentially goes above and beyond that. So happy to entertain any questions, and I know that there are several people on, um, uh, you know, in the meeting tonight that would like to speak on this topic.
Thank you, David. Uh, questions on the staff report? John?
In one way, does the, uh, vacation rental ordinance take something away from, uh, uh, th- this project, this house?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question to, to dig into a little bit more detail. Essentially, in the original ordinance, because we didn't know that there was a regulation, we said, you can do this activity. We didn't know there was going to be a, a regulation that would potentially limit it uh, in the future. And so they, they predicated their, their project on the ability to have the higher revenues associated with, um, you know, using it as a vacation rental as opposed to a long-term tenancy. And so the, the ordinance that we adopted that, uh, regulates short-stay vacation rentals limits the total number of, of vacation rentals to 100 unless there's a long-term tenant on site. And so theoretically, the, um, vacation rental, principally permitted use that we authorized under the historic landmark could never be effectuated if there's 100 permits in place and no one lives on site permanently. And so there's, there are several situations, several scenarios where, where the original ordinance that granted that use to this site as an incentive, several scenarios where it wouldn't be able to be used as an incentive.
So, um, have we hit the cap? Is that the problem? Is this gonna put it over the 100, uh, permitted, uh, vacation rental units? Or is this something-
We're still in process on-
Uh, i- is this something that, that is a possibility in the future?
We're still in process with the, uh, vacation rental permit process, so I don't know what the ultimate number is going to be. But even if it's just a hypothetical at this point, um, we've gone from something that was a guarantee, you can do this activity without limitation, to having limitations. And so, uh, you know, the current owners are, you know, are concerned about that, about having, you know, the in- the main incentive that they were interested in go from a guarantee to a maybe.
Okay, Judith. Thank you, John.
Um, yeah, I have two questions. The first one is that if we were to adopt something like this, I, I think it would be very important either through an ordinance adopted tonight or through a modification to the, um, existing vacation rental ordinance to be clear about whether those three units would be above and beyond the 100, meaning in effect expanding it to 103, um, which may seem trivial, but it's an issue that could easily come up at some point. Or somehow, um, front-loading that 100 so that this would be included within the 100. But, um, if we were to adopt something like this, I think it's, uh, very important that we specify one or the other. And that, that, you know, I don't particularly care which way it would go, but I, I think it does need to be, um, clearly specified before any modification or new ordinance is adopted. Uh, the other question is, a- and this kind of came up because I, I, I realized that, you know, the, the Hunts were able to take advantage of, um, a a, a good relationship with the city. They were able to offer, um, the enticement of a well-maintained historic property in return for all of these incentives. But there are a number of other properties within the city of Arcata, whose owners have not been able to take advantage of those types of incentives. And so I would hope that if we're going to be offering, um, this in perpetuity, subsidy, in effect, to the Hunts, that we would at least think about whether similar advantages would be offered to other own- owners. And if not, to make very explicit that this is a one-time deal for one owner. And so I, I'd like to know if you've done any hypothetical count of the number of other historic properties, whose owners might be interested in applying for something similar. And if so, um, you know, are we willing to adopt a more general ordinance that would provide these advantages to them as well? Um, or are we willing to specify that this is one time as a subsidy to one owner of one property? Um, and I need to go plug my computer in.
Those are-
Thank you, Judith. Good questions.
Yeah, those are really good questions. Right now, the way that the ordinance is structured, that last bullet on packet page 12, uh, that has the double underscore, "Up to three vacation rental units may be operated on-site, subject to permit approval, without being subject to a short-stay vacation rental permit", effectively does the first of the options that you had mentioned, Commissioner Mayor, Vice Chair Mayor, where it would equate to having the potential for having a total of 103 units because we're amending this ordinance that's specific to the site. It, it seemed that since the modification is really site-specific and not broad brush uh, and applied to other, uh, listed properties or other properties with other, um, you know, benefits, public benefits that are conveyed to the city, that it belonged in this ordinance. Um, and it also allowed us to notify, uh, folks based on, uh, this specific site. So right now, it's structured so that there would be the potential for 103, and it's explicit in this ordinance. Um, as to the other owners of historic resources, or, you know, even more broadly, that there are plenty of, uh, property owners who, you know, invest in the community, take really good care of their properties, you know, uh, clean, clean the sidewalks, you know, they go out and, and, uh, you know, rake out the weeds in the sidewalks. So there's lots of really great people in this community doing really great work. And you're absolutely right, we haven't said that, you know, those people then can have the same benefit. These specifics types of incentives are embedded, uh, in the land use code. And there's basically two types of, uh, projects where we've said, we think it's a high enough public benefit that we're willing to give something back. Um, and that's for historic properties and for affordable housing properties, where the city is actually willing to, uh, give incentives to get those kinds of projects to happen. Um, and so for historic properties, you know, these kinds of incentives are certainly available, and it really is up to, you know, the, the landowner, the type of incentive that they feel like they need to make a project work for the given property that they're used, that they have. Uh, and the city, to be able to evaluate those, um, you know, those policy issues. At what point does, do we have too many historic properties wrapped up in, uh, vacation rentals? And we say, you know, we're done. It could be that it's this one, and, and we're done. Or it could be that, you know, three other properties come in and say, hey, we'd like to do that, too. And then it's a politi- policy discussion that the city needs to, uh, engage in to see, you know, is this, you know, what, what we should do in order to preserve these historic resources.
Okay, um, yeah, I, 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 I'm, I'm wondering if before we make our decision, um, tonight, if perhaps the planning commission, uh, can start those discussions and figure out if we have any policy uh, advice on that. I, I don't, I don't think we're gonna hit that 100 right now. But ha- having offered and then re-offered this incentive to one owner, it does seem like it would be only fair to, um, offer similar assurances to other property owners as well. Um, and, and, you know, figuring out at what point does that actually, potentially subvert the intentions of the vacation rental cap that we had, um, that the city had imposed. It, it, you know, again, it's not perhaps something that's gonna come up this year or next year, but it does bring up some questions of basic fairness, um, for future investors.
Judith, I think we're edging into deliberations. Is, uh, are there any other specific questions about the staff report that we should be pondering at this point?
I, I, I guess not, but since those two things were not clear in the staff report, um, I figured I'd bring them up.
I think they were excellent questions, and I appreciate the clarity. Is there anybody else with a question on the staff report? Okay, um, seeing none, I think we should move on to, uh, public input on this item?
Yeah, so if you would like to speak on this item, um, please click on the button to, uh, raise your hand. And it looks like we have one, uh, call-in user. Uh, if I don't see a hand go up, I may just, uh, check to see if they're interested in talking at some point. Go ahead, Scott, you're in the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, David. And, uh, thank you for considering this, uh, tonight on our behalf. It's, it's not, I'm sure, an easy decision to make. Um, I think that, uh, David, you have said it well. Uh, we feel that what we were initially, uh, granted on this property is being taken away from us by this ordinance. And I wanted to clarify for Commissioner Mayor, um, the, just the use of the term, um, reward, uh, in the terms of rewarding an owner. I think a better, uh, term to use would be to help offset the additional dollars that it takes to rehabilitate properties like the Chapman. Um, do I believe that a historic property, or that historic properties in general deserve special treatment and consideration? Yes, I, I guess I do. And, uh, for those people who are willing to place properties specifically in Arcata on the National Historic Registry, on the local registry, and go through the process of getting the property on, onto the Mills Act, uh, the reality is yes. And I think that, uh, if it means that ultimately the, you need to consider this on a property-by-property basis, um, I think that at the end of the day, there will be so few of these that the task of that consideration will not be overly onerous. But I do believe that you are, uh, Commissioner Mayor, absolutely on point in that in the long run, that you should be looking at how you can continue to incentivize those people who are willing to invest in our community and do so, and, and look at all means that they can to make their investment in some way, um, return or help offset those ongoing costs that take place. And I, I did see Supervisor, um, uh, the Supervisor Mike Wilson's comments, and, um, and I, I appreciate his concern about providing permanent housing in our community. And, um, at the same time, I think that, uh, properties like the Chapman provide more to our community, and there are plenty of other opportunities to provide permanent housing, uh, in our community. I think that the Chapman and others like it make a, uh, insignificant impact, uh, on that, that piece of it. And so I'm, I will stop there, and if there's an additional comment that anybody would, uh, like me to talk to, I can hopefully come back around and comment more.
Thank you, Scott. Director Loya, do you see any other participants?
We do. Um, let's see. Go ahead, call-in user number one.
David, hi, this is Jill McDonald. Is it my turn to talk?
It is, yes. We can hear you.
Okay, hi. Hi, um, thank you for the opportunity, and, um, thank you for all of the thoughtful comments. I've got the unique position, um, in this circumstance to have been on the Historic Landmark Committee, your feeder committee for historic preservation ideas for the last six-plus years. And also, the, also I am fortunate enough to be representing the Hunts as a real estate agent, so I've got a really unique perspective here. But I'm gonna speak as a historic, um, landmark committee member, the vice chair of that committee right now. And, um, when I was asked to sit on the committee, I said, I will sit on that committee if we are a committee about carrots and not sticks. And ever since I've been on that committee, we, as a, a group, have, uh, tried to proactively come up with ideas that would encourage people to take the risk to invest in historic properties, because the investment in historic properties is it's a scary endeavor, and I know that on both sides. Owning several, uh, representing people who are buying them, and, um, just, uh, generally with my, um, that educational background, um, there's just so many unknowns, and so, so many people are so fearful of historic resources. You know, e- 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 as a real estate agent, I, I see it all day long, you know, oh, no, 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 I'm not, no, oh, hobbit two, oh, I'm afraid of lead-based pay, asbestos, hobbit tube wiring, post-imperium foundation, it goes on and on and on. And it is a definite education process to get someone to understand and to love and to want to, to invest in those types of properties. So for me, this, this entitlement, or whatever the proper word is, that, that the Hunts were granted when they decided to embark on this, really, I don't know, uh, aside from the Ingamar Club or the Carson Mansion in Eureka, which has been a conservation project over the years, certainly not a restoration project. I don't know of another property locally that's a historic property that more resources have been put into. So for them to enter into this adventure, um, just Just having the support of the city and having what I call the flexibility. It's really what you gave them is the flexibility in use for the property. It doesn't, just because it's being used as a vacation rental, that's just a, that's just a tool for them. And it, and it increases value for them for when somebody is coming in and maybe looking at this property. Hey, I can live in it. I can rent it long term. I can have some STRs. I can use it in a variety of different ways. And that's the way I look at it. That's exactly why I'm a member of the Historic Landmark Committee. Because those are the types of tools that I get really excited about being able to offer. So I know that I would like our committee to bring some ideas to the planning commission. I think we have. I mean, we got the Mills Act. Ordinance adopted through the City of Eureka, or City of Eureka, excuse me, City of Arcata. And this, this opportunity of being, having a flexible zoning or flexible use is, is a great. Tool as well as permit streamlining and there's, there's a bunch of others. So thank you and those are my comments. And if anybody has any questions with me, I'm available for, for that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill.
If anyone else would like to speak to the commission. Please press the blue hand, raise your hand button. I am not seeing any at this point.
Okay, well, thank you for the public comment and we will close that and move on to commission deliberations on this topic. Who would like to go first? John, please.
Well, seems like a pretty reasonable ordinance to, to make, make a change. In the, the parameters for the Chapman House. I think it would probably be reasonable to. Limit the vacation rental units to two, which is what the original, the original ordinance specified. I don't oppose the idea of increasing it to three. But I think maybe it's a question that will be better addressed by the city council. As well as the limitations that Mike Wilson mentioned in his letter to us. I think that's. Something would be better considered by the city council rather than the planning commission.
Thank you, John. Anybody else?
I wanted to double check. I'm pretty sure that the original ordinance did not limit the. The number to two, so I just wa- wanted to confirm that and I'll report back.
Thank you. Judith?
Yeah, I, I, I think that in this case, it probably does make sense to. Accept the application on the part of the property owners. I, I think that. Limiting either the number of units to two rather than three. Means that there would be two vacation rentals, one long-term resident. You know, that, that tends to create some interesting management problems for an owner. I, I don't have strong feelings about it. The city council might. I, I would like to ensure that. The other property owners in town who have similar historic resources and might want to invest in them. Clearly have these options open to them as well. And so I'm. I, I, I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant to. Somehow not build into this ordinance. Equal treatment for other potential investors rather than doing this after the fact. But we're not being asked to do that in this application right now and staff hasn't prepared anything like that for us. And I, I guess it is something that can be dealt with in a case by case situation. But I think it's important that, you know, we say upfront that we're not intending to, to. Provide advantages or incentives to one property owner that we wouldn't be willing to provide. To other similar property owners. And finally, I, I'd just like to. Note something for commenter from the public Jill McDonald. Who is speaking as both the Chair of the City Committee with an interest in this issue. And as a representative of the property owner. And, and just caution us all to recognize potential conflicts of interest. Before us and the history of the protocol of city committee. Members and chairs coming to us representing those committees. Without a clear official mandate to do so. In this case, because she's representing the property owner, but also indicated that she's representing the committee as chair. I, I'm frankly very uncomfortable. With both of those happening at the same time. And I, and I think that we should just be aware, you know, as, as. Commission members ourselves of how easily we can slip into those. Multiple hat roles in ways that are problematic rather than in, in this case where. You know, she, she's very upfront that, that she has both of those interests going on here. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Who else would like to speak to this? Well, if nobody else, I'll reflect on what I've been hearing and I really appreciate the thoughtful comments. This property seems very deserving of what they're asking. And I know that it was built into the kind of finances of a, of a rather large investment. And we all know that they went a lot further with the property than they probably could have. I, that said. And I think Judith just addressed this rather well. Sure hope that future landmark. Property owners feel that they have some pathway that would result in the same results. You know, if we're now going from a hundred, a cap of a hundred to a hundred and three, then. If the next project comes along and they say, we'd like to also go beyond the cap of a hundred and not be accountable to that. We'll just have to revisit it and I, I know that to get on. A property registered as historic and it, it takes more incentive, more investment and a fair amount of work. So I don't think there's going to be a snowball of projects, you know, running in to try to grab this loophole. But I do hope that we're all prepared to deal with it in the future if somebody plays that angle. It, it, it only seems fair. I, I, it's kind of surprising to me that we're. That this is all about one single project without having some opening to other future projects. However, as it sits in front of us, I do support that they, this project deserves. Long-term opportunity to maintain their rentals that they had the city agree upon, we agreed upon at a much earlier date. And David, it would be helpful if at this point you had an answer on the two or three units. Is that possible?
Yeah, I've read through the original ordinance and it didn't specify or limit it to two. And so if you did want to change it to two, again, that would be, you know, backtracking on the original agreement. It just listed vacation rental as a principally permitted activity on the site.
So there was no specifics about, I think when we originally. Saw this project through, it didn't include the carriage house. Is that correct?
It did include the carriage house. And in fact, we had some discussion about whether the. Carriage house should be considered for, you know, any type of incentive. And we've had this, this same discussion previously on other historic landmarks where. You know, identifying an incentive that isn't related to the, the historic resource per se. Or directly related to it may still have some benefit that create the, the potential, the financial feasibility to, you know, continue that maintenance and. Preserve the resource long-term. And so, you know, this is a case where there is a new structure on the site. And it was a package deal. The entire property was given, you know, certain incentives. And, you know, so just looking at the list of incentives that are in attachment B, under the exhibit three heading. You know, there were a whole lot of different uses that were authorized. And so, you know, the idea being that, you know, they could do any of these uses as long as it, you know. You know, as, as long as they felt like it would support their maintenance of that historic structure and they, they in fact did maintain that historic structure. And committed to the other exhibits which list, you know. The features to be preserved and et cetera.
Okay, are there any other comments, questions or emotion?
Looks like you have a couple of blue hands that popped up there. Chair tagged me.
Okay, I would like to hear in these COVID Zoom times. I know it's tricky to get on. If you all don't mind.
These are actually your, your fellow planning commissioners. So Commissioner White and Commissioner Figaroa.
Pardon me.
I think Kim was first.
Okay, Kimberly, I don't see the blue hands, so it's a little hard to manage.
I just wanted to say that I don't feel we should limit it to two. I feel like at this point, in order to preserve what we initially agreed upon. That they were principally permitted to do one of nine. Options and to keep in line with what we've already agreed to. They've already invested and have held their end of the deal. And I would love to see that we also maintain the same. And I do understand Supervisor Wilson's. Concerns on affordable housing and I guess I would. Also agree with. Joan in that, or maybe it was Scott, that it is only one, it's miniscule. I, I, and the bigger picture on affordable housing, I guess, I feel like the benefit outweighs. What we would gain in keeping this as a. Vacation rental or any of the other principally permitted uses as opposed to. And certainly one of those could be multifamily housing, but I just would like to leave all the options open because that's what we agreed upon. Anyway.
Thank you, Kimberly. Commissioner Figaroa?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify in respects to the short stay rental ordinance, you know, have, have we've already had a hundred applicants? You know, and, and if we have, you know, okay, that's, it makes sense to add. You know, the statement have, you know, to essentially guarantee. The Chapman House owners these three places, but if we haven't had the hundred applicants. I can understand, you know, creating, you know, essentially modifying, modifying the existing ordinance and creating this new ordinance and become. An actual guarantee by the city to these owners, but if we haven't met a cap. Or is this just a preface to just a guarantee? I'm just trying to understand that and, you know, and also Supervisor Wilson's. You know, statements in regards of affordable housing and so forth. You know, that really strikes a chord with me. So I just want to make sure, you know, we're making the right decision. You know, they have an opportunity there for a rental, for a long-term rental, you know, for an individual in the community. And making sure that we're making the right decision, you know, for equity for individuals that can't find housing in our community. Just because of lack of housing. And secondly, and, and as well, equity for others that have potential projects like this in our community and to. Not necessarily incentivize them like we're, you know, that we've said in the, in the past here. But to again, provide them a guarantee to enter into something like this as well. But also, you know, fit within that hundred, you know, short stay rental. Zone essentially within those hundred, you know, those hundred applicants. So I'm just trying to get some more clarification, you know, and, you know, is this just a guarantee to them? You know, or, you know, making it law, you know, effectively. And, you know, what, what essentially prompted this essentially because, you know, just doing a little research into this. You know, this is actually one of the first city council meetings I went to prior to applying for this position. And the big statement by the Hunts was to provide this thing for our community, for our community to enjoy. And, and you look, and I looked at like prices, you know, how much does it cost to stay at this place? You know, it's like $300, $400 a night. So it's like, okay, you know, how many people in our community can really enjoy this outside of this, in the static, you know, improvement? So I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, how it came about, you know, so on and so forth. And also too, you know, looking at the, the recent real estate, you know. It looks like they got nervous and they listed the property for sale. So for $2.2 million. So I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out how this law came about ultimately.
Yeah, so to address the question about. Whether this is, you know, guarantee or how that, that relates to the original and whether there are a hundred permit, permits issued to date and so on and so forth. There, there aren't a hundred permits issued to date. We're still in a rollout period. The city gave a six-month term for the existing users to come into compliance with the ordinance. And so that six-month term ends in September. And so theoretically, we could be at a hundred by that point, but right now we're not. And so the purpose of this amendment really is to ratify. The original ordinance to the historic landmarking and ensure that those. Incentives that we agreed to give the Hunts are honored into the future. Without regard to the short stay rental ordinance. So you're, you're absolutely right about that, that sole purpose of this. Is a hypothetical, there's no current situation that, you know, is causing them to not be able to get a, a permit. For short stay rental use. But there are situations in the future, plenty of, you know, conceivable situations in the future. Where they would not be able to get a short stay rental permit. And so this is a guarantee to that property that the incentive that we authorized in the original landmarking will continue into the future. And then in terms of, you know, where this came from, you know, it's not germane to whether or not we, you know, consider the. You know, this amendment that it's listed, but it is true that it is listed right now. The new buyers are interested in moving in and living there. And so technically, while they live there, they would be subject to the exemption for owner occupancy. That's built into the short stay rental ordinance now. But those, those prospective owners are also interested in being able to potentially exercise. You know, the, all three of the units as short stay rentals in the future. And so, you know, regardless of who owns the property. The question is, do we want to ensure that? Uh, the question is, do we want to ensure that short stay rental is a viable option for this property? To maintain the historic resource in perpetuity. Um, and then in terms of the. Uh, you know, the, the use on the sites, um, you know, I, I agree that there are other uses that would be more. Uh, you know, community oriented, one of the uses that's allowed for, again, by right. On the property, uh, even though it's not allowed in the district typically is a doctor's office. And a doctor's office certainly would provide more uh, community benefit than say a short stay rental would. Um, but really, all of the incentives that were envisioned and authorized in this ordinance. Were predicated on the new investment, uh, that the Hunts were willing to make to bring the, the resource back to life. Um, I don't know if you recall what it looked like before. You know, its current state, um, but those aesthetic improvements, at least in the, the city's estimation when they. Uh, approved the original ordinance. Were significant enough to warrant, you know, providing these incentives at that time.
I, I appreciate that. I walk by it pretty much every day. It's down the street from my house. It's, it's gorgeous. So I, I appreciate that, that information. Um, as for the short stay, you know, for instance. You know, in that, how, how much, I, I'm sorry to like slightly get off topic, but how much would it cost to apply for a single use permit, for instance? You know, for, for one, for one look, you know, for one rental, for instance, what would it cost annually?
For a, for a short stay rental permit?
Yes.
Oh, they're ridiculously cheap. Um, we basically cost out the, uh, you know, the staff time to issue them. And right now, you know, we, we don't have any experience with this, so we, we made some estimates. The permit fees may change in the future. Um, but right now we get fifty dollars to process a permit. And the Hunts, uh, or the future owners of this property would, would have to apply. They're, they're not exempt from, you know, the permit process. Um, they would have to apply and, and, you know, receive a permit and stay in good standing and et cetera. Uh, according to the short stay rental ordinance. In order to, to receive that benefit. So it's, uh. You know, it. They're subject to all the other requirements of the short stay rental permit. Uh, this came up a couple of times from a couple of different commissioners as well. And so I wanted to, uh, take the opportunity to address. Whether, you know, we should be doing something, you know, writ large and whether other historic resources have the opportunity to. You know, come in and get the same benefit, same incentive. And the answer is absolutely yes. They, you know, other. Folks that aren't listed right now, if they want to come in and, and, you know, get listed. Um, you know, we should, we sit down with each of those property owners and try and figure out what package of incentives, because our, our land use code is really broad. It lists a couple of things that, you know, that we thought were uh, common incentives people would want, and then it says, or any other incentive. And so, you know, we sit down and work with, uh, those prospective, uh, historic landmark owners. And try and build a package of incentives that makes sense to ensure that that resource will be maintained in perpetuity. And so just to respond to that question from several commissioners, the answer is absolutely yes. We. We would offer this again, uh, and again, it would be up to a policy decision of the city council to say, well, we want to tap the brakes. On vacation rentals, but we'd like to other, offer other incentives. Um, you know, at this point, it, it really is de minimis. In terms of its impact on the housing market.
So is there an opportunity then, for instance, you know, for whether it's the Hunts or new property owner, for instance? Um, say if they did want to live there, however they wanted to apply for the free permits, can they hold those permits essentially and not use them?
No, that's one of the requirements of the short stay rental ordinance. If you do not use it, you lose it. Um, it's less of a, it's less of a concern for someone who's occupying the site or has a long term tenant. Um, because they would be exempt from the cap anyway. But these are non, um, non, you know, non tradable resources. Um, they're not transferable, so they, you can't. Uh, obtain a permit and then sell the property with the permit. When you transfer the property, the permit goes away. Um, they're not transferable to another party. So that you could take a permit from one location and sell it to someone at another location. Um, if the person at the one location, uh, is no longer going to do that use, they give the permit up and then we go to our waitlist and see is there, who's the next person on the list. And then we issue the permit to them. And so we try to take the economics out of. The permit itself and not give value to the permit or value to the property. Um, and I think it was, uh, maybe Commissioner Mayor who pointed out, and, and I think, uh, you know. Uh, Mike Wilson, who just, uh, for the record informed me, he was not speaking on, um, you know, in his role as supervisor. He was speaking on, uh, you know, as. You know, in his, uh, personal capacity, private capacity. Um, but he, he pointed out that, you know, this ordinance, uh, as amended will effectively create. Value on this property that other properties don't have, and that is absolutely true. That's exactly what we're trying to do in a lot of respects is to create a value for this property. That can then be used to support the resource. Um, so I think that's, you know, kind of the distinction between what we tried to do with the short stay rental ordinance and what we're trying to do with this ordinance.
Thanks.
Okay, other commission, uh, comments and or. A motion, yes, Kimberly.
And, and I apologize, I'm sure that David just clarified, but if we were to put the one hundred and three. Does that guarantee that when the new owner decides if they do decide to use all three, would that. Come with the package? Or if you don't use all three, you lose the number of, like, say they only use two. Can they ever change that or they need to reapply? Does that make sense?
It does, yeah. This ordinance would effectively create three. Uh, potential vacation rentals on this site without regard to the cap. And so, you know, one of the scenarios where they would lose, uh, the ability to do vacation rental is. The, we have a hundred vacation rentals that are not subject to the, to the exemptions. In the city already. And the owner decides they're going to move out and then backfill that. Uh, unit that they left with a vacation rental. Without this amendment, they wouldn't be able to do it. Um, and. With the amendment, they would be able to. So it, it preserves that incentive that we originally authorized in the landmark ordinance.
Thank you for that clarification. So are you looking for, it looks like Judith has a question.
Kimberly, are you, are you? Are you okay with my asking a question?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, so in, in terms of the wording of, of. The ordinance, I'm. I'm, I'm realizing that you're trying to do this in one ordinance that the planning commission could recommend to the city council. Um, but I'm, I'm also looking at the basis of the city council's rationale for that hundred. And I, I know that that's a fairly arbitrary number, but it is the number that reflects the intent of the council. Um, and I, I think that it would. Respect that intent if we were to make clear that the cap remains one hundred. Rather than is expanded to a hundred and three. Um, and somehow make it clear that, um, these. Three potential units are uploaded into that number. We did exactly that with the formula restaurant. Ordinance in effect by, by, uh. Originally including names and later including numeric limits for one area of the city. Um, and I understand that this would require modifying not only the, um. The ordinance, well, I understand it would require not only adopting the, um, ordinance suggested for today. But also amending the ordinance, um, that the city council has adopted with that hundred limit. Um, but I, I think to be fair and to respect that hundred limit. Um, even though we're nowhere near it, um, and to make clear in the future that. You know, we respect that limit. Um, I would strongly recommend. A recommendation to the city council to amend the other ordinance as well, which is not before us today. Um, to front load these three units into that hundred. Um, rather than to add to them, that would also set. A necessary precedent for other properties in the future. Um, and in, in effect, it would require. I, i- in effect, what it would do is it would prioritize. Uh, historic prop- properties for. Um, getting those short term rental. Permits in the future if we ever come up against that limit. And if we're not willing to do that. I, I don't know that I'm willing to do this one either. So it, it, it's a matter of timing. It is a coincidence that they applied for this. Um, incentive just before the city adopted. Um, the ordinance, but I don't think that we should in any way compromise. Either the intent or the number behind that ordinance.
Uh, Judith, can I just ask for clarity here? If those were front loaded in and the. Cap remained a hard line at a hundred. The city's ability in the future to negotiate with a, a. Property conversion would be limited be. In this respect, they would not be able to offer any slots on the hundred if the hundred was a firm number. And I, I, I totally understand what you're saying and I respect it. I, I'm just looking for a little clarity on this one because it would. Take that away as a future incentive to any property.
Well, I think that the city council is very, um, much able to make specific decisions about. Um, those limits themselves. They can offer whatever they want. But I don't want to set a precedent that anytime a historic. Um, resource is up for this designation that we ignore that, that limit to say, oh, oh, yeah. Um, we have this hundred limit, but if you, if you want to invest in a historic property. Um, yeah, you, you can, you can do it for a short term rental. And then, um. Yeah, put it on the market and, and, and retrieve that. It increased value from the property, which is what the current owners of this property are attempting to do. Um, so I, I, I do understand that it would involve modifying. Uh, that original ordinance, that's not within our power to do. It's not up before us today, but I think our recommendation to the city council should include that.
Okay, who's next? Kimberly?
Um, I just want to see if I understand, so. The potential sale, it hasn't gone through, was it predicated on the promise that we've already. Signed off on and now we're going to change the. The game or the, I, that's my concern is I don't want to set a precedent that we go back on our word. I guess is what I'm thinking is like, okay, so we promised this, then whether they decided to sell it or not should be a moot point. Because that was the deal and the new potential buyers may have bought it. On the possibility that although they're going to live there, that they could at one point move out. And it could be three vacation rentals, but so now. Just seems like maybe all bets are off and we're going to change your mind. That's just my concern and I totally understand that. You know, we, my concern is if we don't change it to one hundred and three, then there, there is no option. Um, because once they moved in, say that number has hit one hundred, then they decide to move out, they're not going to be able to put it. At a third vacation rental, is that correct?
Yeah, and I think what, um, Vice Chairman is suggesting is that the short stay rental ordinance. Be amended to effectively ninety seven plus the three for this, um, this property. So they would still, if, if both those actions happened, they would still be, uh, preserve their ability to have all three. And, you know, that really is a, a policy decision that, you know, the planning commission could certainly recommend to the, to the council. If you forward this ordinance, uh, as amended.
So then it would be exactly as it is, it's, you know, they would still have those protections of allowed three, we would just keep that number. At the original intention of city council at one hundred, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I, I'm not sure I understand here now, if, um, if this property in, what, what was the term, importunity? Was granted that they would always be able to do three. Um, if the owner moves into one and all the other one hundred units in town get filled right up to the cap. They still get three and it would then, if they move out and say, we want to turn it back into a, a vacation rental would go up to a hundred and one. And there's nothing we could do about it because these two things contradict each other.
Yeah, essentially what would have to happen is that the short stay rental ordinance would have to be amended from one hundred to ninety seven. And then the hunt would get the ninety. Uh, eighth, ninety ninth and one hundred permits, whether they use them or not, so effectively reducing the cap.
Yes, that's it, whether they use them or not. John?
Well, uh, we're talking about, uh. Speculative, uh, vacation rental units. And if we, uh, for example, if we did recommend the council, uh, limit. Uh, reduce the limit to ninety seven plus three for. This property. And they didn't. Uh, apply for three, uh, permits. Then it would be less than a hundred, uh, uh, vacation rental units. And, you know, maybe, maybe the council would think that's okay. I, I don't know, but also I just wanted to comment that. That, uh. I think it should be irrelevant to us. Uh, who, who is selling and who is buying and, and, uh. I think we should be addressing the, uh. The actual question, uh, that's attached to the, uh, to the property, not. Not, uh, the, the, uh, identities and personalities of. Of the folks who are involved in this.
It's a good point.
Okay, who else?
Can I say one last thing? I, I would be more in favor in revisiting the short stay rental ordinance. I think it's more equitable in the sense that, you know. A hundred, a hundred locations within our, in our city limits is a lot. Um, and reserving three. For perpetuity as part of the hundred for, for this property for the Chapman House. Um, is, you know, beneficial to, to the owners. And is also beneficial to the community in respects to availability. Because effectively what that can mean is, oh, it could be three different rentals at a single property, or it can be three different properties. Than which come out of the housing stock. So I think it's more, I think this would fit better in revisiting the short stay, um, rental ordinance rather than amending. Um, or essentially creating a new ordinance to include this, you know, these three. Um, guaranteed, um, short stay rentals, um, as in this ordinance.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion, Chair?
Please.
Um, I have two. The first is, uh, in the motion, if there's to be a motion. Uh, to. Uh, adopt tiny commission resolution PC twenty one oh three. Um, I would ask that you. Incorporate attachment B. As exhibit one. That's the way it was intended to be drafted and I'm not sure why the packets, um, organized this way, but attachment B. The proposed ordinance is supposed to be exhibit one to the resolution. Um, that, that's the sort of mechanical one, the, the substantive one or the, the sort of, um. Strategic one, uh, recommendation I have for you is that. Because you haven't heard from everybody and because there may be a disagreement about, uh, you know, how to. Um, you know, handle this, amending this short stay rental ordinance to ninety seven instead of a hundred. either take the items up separately or do a straw poll in advance for efficiency on that, you know, on that item.
No, I appreciate appreciate that idea. I think we need to kind of fish or cut bait here. There's a lot of thoughts on the table, but no motions. If somebody would like to make a motion one way or the other, we could see if it flies. And if it doesn't, we can amend and straw poll and move on. Judith?
Yeah, it's a process issue. The amendment to the amendment that we had before us was for the Chapman House Historic Landmark Ordinance. That was agendized in our agenda and announced to the public. There was no agenda item to amend the short-term rental ordinance. That's not on our agenda. It has not been public noticed. So we cannot take action on that as a motion. All we can do is to add a note to the item that actually was agendized as 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 part of our notion is that I'm David, I I I don't, I hate to be quibbly, but it does seem to me that that's not something that we could do today, that that would not be allowed.
I think that it's related to the action that you are taking. And so the action would be to adopt resolution PC twenty-one oh three, incorporate attachment B as exhibit one to PC twenty-one oh three and make a recommendation to the city council that they consider the following policy. And so I think that's totally legitimate. The amendment to the ordinance would not happen at the next meeting that the city council have has. They would have to come back and notice that separately on an agenda and then take it up independently.
Okay, and and until the city council does take action, the Chapman House ordinance wouldn't be officially modified in any case, right?
When the city council takes action on the Chapman ordinance, if they choose to do so, it would be effective thirty days after the second reading. Irrespective of what
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking is that if the city council does put this amendment to the Chapman ordinance on their agenda, they could also agendize modifying the short-term rental ordinance at the same time. But we can't do that. Is that correct?
That's that's correct. And then they could take action on it as a noticed item. They don't have to refer that to you for a recommendation.
Okay, but we could certainly make a recommendation to them as part of our resolution.
You can.
Okay. Then I so move.
You so move what? You want to lay it all out?
Please repeat. Please repeat. Thank you.
I I moved to adopt resolution number PC twenty-one oh three with attachment B with the additional recommendation to the city council that the city council modify the short-term rental ordinance to retain the one hundred cap. I thi- I I think that reflects it.
Do you need to say exhibit one? Attachment B exhibit one?
I got it.
Okay, I'm not sure which is the exhibit, which is the attachment. Yes. So yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, good. David's hot. Got it. So we have a motion. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Director Lawrie, would you like to do a roll call?
Yeah, Commissioner Figaro.
Hi.
Commissioner Barstow.
Hi.
Commissioner Visage Elcock.
Hi.
Commissioner White.
Hi.
Vice Chair Mayor.
Hi.
And Chair Tagney.
Hi. Okay, thank you. Congratulations to the, can I? We wish you well. Thank you for that project. Moving along to a business item. We have to consider coastal land use and zoning. Are we going to get a staff report on that now?
Yeah, I'm actually thrilled to bring this to you. Making progress on the coastal zoning ordinance. And I've been working with our with Brian Kang, our GIS guru, who's been putting the maps together for me. And I know in late twenty-nine, twenty-twenty, rather, we had several meetings on the local coastal program, looked at some of the regulation, and I think you were all thirsty to see the zoning map. And so I'm happy to present to you the first draft of the zoning map that's ready for public consumption. So what I'd like to do, I'm gonna share my screen here and we're going to go into presentation mode. And what I'd like to do is to consider, you know, the properties, we'll zoom in on them and we'll look at them in in detail and look at what some of the changes are from the current zoning here. And if you have comments or, you know, you know, commentary, we can put them into this notes field and we'll we'll track all that and make sure that we reflect that. Okay, so zooming out, super big picture, the dark blue line, thick blue line is the coastal zone boundary. Everything to the west is in the coastal zone. Zoom in on this a little bit. Everything to the east is outside of the coastal zone. And right now I've got the proposed coastal zoning designations lit up. I just can orient you here real quick so that you can tell me, hey, will you turn on such and such layer? We've got the zoning inland layer. We can turn that on and off. Frankly, it probably doesn't have any bearing, but if you're interested in, hey, well, what's, you know, right next to the coastal zone, we could turn that on and off. What I plan to do primarily though is to have the zoning in the coastal zone turned on and then we can turn the new layer, the new coastal combining zone on and off and look at what the changes are. And then, as I mentioned before, I've got this notes field. So if we want to make a note, I can I can do that. I also have available to us the actual parcel data. So if we're zoomed in and you all want to get into the minutia and find out, well, how big is that parcel anyway? What are the uses that are allowed right now on that parcel? We could actually dig into that as well. But yeah, I'm I'm super thrilled to be able to present this to you. And please just unmute, unmike or, you know, mic up and interrupt me at any time if you have a question. I'm going to be focused on the map, so I probably won't see you raise your hand. I saw that one, though, Vice Chair Mayor. Just jump in, interrupt me.
Thank you. I I was super excited to learn that you've got a draft map here and that you would be presenting it. But I'm also wondering if, you know, this is not a a an action item today. Are we going to have access to this as either a separate GIS or is it some kind of a PDF to take a closer look at in the next few weeks before we're asked to take action?
Yeah, absolutely. Right now, we've got some, you know, GIS isn't at the state where I can just turn this over to you and let you play around with it. But I do plan on preparing some maps that would show, you know, existing zoning and changes in zoning. For the most part, the zoning isn't changing, but yeah, I do plan to do that. Okay, so again, super high level overview. And just a reminder, I did include in the packet. Chair Tagney, do you have something?
Yeah, I would like to ask quickly. On the coastal zone side, you have many highlighted parcels, but not all parcels have any highlighting designation. Can you just tell me why?
Yeah, so on the inland side, as we sometimes call it, I can turn those on and off as well. So if you're interested in, well, what does the zoning look like over there? We can look at that. Right now, our our blue line, our big blue line that splits the coastal zone from the inland side, we've also segregated the GIS data so we can look at it independently.
Quite get my question. My question is really, what about the parcel? Oops, sorry. Am I, no, I'm not, am I?
No, you're good.
There we go.
Nope, you were good.
Why are not all parcels on the left side of your blue line highlighted with something? They all have a zoning designation. Why aren't they highlighted?
Gotcha. Good question. These are only the the parcels that are inside the city of Arcata. So if it's outside the city of Arcata, it doesn't have a zoning designation. We're not amending it. Good question. Okay, so I included in the packet the the planning and locating development chapter of our proposed zoning ordinance for the coastal zone. And that was mainly to draw your attention back to and be able to answer questions about, you know, specific land use or zoning designations. The only thing I want to say about it at this point is to remind you that what we're doing in the coastal zone, what we're proposing to do is to have all of the land use designations, all of the zoning designations essentially overlay the land use code underlying designations. And so you'll see parity in some cases where, for example, there's a residential low-density parcel with a combining zone that is coastal residential low-density. And so that completely matches the underlying zoning. And then there's some other zoning districts where we've just combined a bunch of stuff that we don't really have a whole lot of activity on in the coastal zone in the first place. So for example, natural resources in our land use code is broken into, you know, timber sites and and other, we just combined that all under one open space designation. So let me let me zoom in and look at a couple of examples just to orient you. So here is this really large parcel here is the Baylands. And if it's if it's helpful, I can turn on the parcel lines. Does this help you or is this more chaos? Okay, I'm seeing we like it. We'll give more of that. So the Baylands right now is under coastal agricultural. And just to show you, the underlying designation is agricultural as well. So these, this is an example where there's complete parity between the new combining zone and the underlying land use code zoning designation. In this area here where we have, you know, this is NR in the underlying zoning, we've combined all the NR into this. Underlying zoning districts, it may be different. Okay, so let's let's look at these changes here. So the first first big change is in the area that we are anticipating to come under the Arcata Gateway. This area here. The proposal in the current is to change that all to commercial, I'm sorry, coastal mixed use. And so when we come back around with the Arcata Gateway, we'll go back for another local coastal plan update to incorporate that zoning change. And all of that zoning change will be allowed under this coastal mixed use. Right now, the zoning designations are various industrial and commercial uses. Commercial, I'm sorry, heavy industrial, light industrial, some general commercial. And so what we're proposing here is to bring that all under the coastal mixed use. And then ultimately, it would be until that new Arcata Gateway is adopted, it would be regulated under the current zoning, whether it's commercial, industrial or residential medium. And in the future, it would be regulated by the Arcata Gateway when that's adopted into the coastal zone. We've got that same change here in the Union Town Shopping Center. I want to draw your attention to that. Whoops, a little too close. So right now, this is general commercial in the Union Town Shopping Center. And we have talked for years about changing this to commercial mixed use and allowing for higher density here. If I turn these both off, I'll just refresh your memory that it's basically a gigantic vast sea of parking. This parking scenario where you have about twenty or thirty percent of the parking spaces filled is a pretty common scenario, which leads me to believe that you could have a heck of a lot more uses here and make better use of that parking and or occupy some of this parking for other uses. We've had several people look at this over time. And so the idea is to change that to coastal mixed use. This is also a target area to do more of a form-based code. It's an opportunity zone for, you know, creating higher density and more economic opportunities. You'll see in the rest of this field, though, things aren't really changing much. And so we've got commercial central, we've got residential medium. The proposal is to leave those as is. This is still part of the plaza area, the commercial central. These are still residential medium. They're very well built out. Pretty pretty dense in here already anyway. Some of these, you know, the residential high, that's just reflecting the existing zoning districts. Okay, so let's focus a little bit on the south of Samoa area. Now, there's a couple of things going on here. One, you know, we've got, you know, fairly high-density residential district. Let me turn off the coastal zoning here. Fairly high-density residential district, you know, kind of squashed in between some industrial limited uses, which also have the ability to have some residential under current zoning. And then on the frontage of Samoa, there's general commercial. These are principally, you know, there's there's not a whole lot of walk-up commercial in this space right now. It's mostly existing non non-conforming uses. What we're proposing here is a couple of things. One is to add an overlay zone. Let me turn off the coastal zoning real quick so you can just look at this hashed line. This overlay zone is on top of the other overlay zones that we'll be adding in the coastal zone that allows for coastal commercial visitor serving. Coastal Commission has special allowances, special designations for coastal commercial visitor serving. And the idea is that you're providing for that transient population, you know, you can have things like typically, you know, you'll see like hotels or, you know, stores, retail that's really oriented towards the, you know, the tourists, maybe a kayak shop or, you know, a surfboard shop, bike rental, that kind of thing. So that you're catering to that commercial visitors, coastal commercial visitor serving population. That, along with some of the other proposed changes here, is going to help us over time with our our adaptation strategy. The concept here is if you give other uses that may have a higher return on the investment beyond what the existing use that's there, then you can start to move those properties in the direction of something that doesn't have, for example, residential. Where you're putting, you know, people's lives, their property, their their assets in potential harms way when sea level rises inundating this area on a regular basis. So that's one of the concepts here. And you'll see that that coastal commercial visitor serving really occupies the vast majority of the privately held parcels in this, what we've referred to historically as the, you know, the peninsula, the raised fill that forms the peninsula that leads out to the wastewater treatment plant. This is again, as you recall from our sea level rise conversation, the area that we would like to retain, that we have the the largest ability to defend for the longest term. And so if you're in this coastal commercial visitor serving area, we're giving you new uses that will hopefully help people decide to transition over time. Turn back on the coastal zoning so we can look at changes in use, land use here. Now, this is a little bit I'm gonna turn back on the coastal zoning so we can look at changes in use, land use here. Now, this is a little bit, um, uh, confusing because the way that the, uh, combining zone works, Brian has, for example, in this area, created a new color for commercial industrial, uh, coastal industrial and coastal commercial visitor. So this CI designation basically reflects the exact same type of, uh, use that's on this, uh, parcel over here. For example, this is CI. It's just that this parcel doesn't have the coastal commercial visitor serving overlay on it. And so you'll see that in a couple of examples, like for instance, here, we're not increasing the, uh, housing density allowed. In fact, we're maintaining it the same as it is now, but we're adding a visitor-serving overlay. So these aren't necessarily entirely different kinds of land use designations or zoning designations. It's just that uh, Brian Kang, our, our GIS guru reflected a combination somewhat separately. Okay, so now that I've explained that somewhat, you know, the difference between these two, uh, colors, what we're looking at here is really no change in the zoning. These are all commercial industrial, light industrial. And we're proposing to retain that with the added layer in this side of the peninsula of adding, uh, visitor serving. So these, these land uses would be able to, you know, continue and maintain. They'd be subject to the limitations in the land use code and, uh, and the coastal. Same thing down here. These are commercial industrial now. They're going to retain that commercial industrial designation. Okay, zipping to the west here real quick. We've got a lot going on near Sunny Bray. Uh, right now, there's some commercial general. Um, there's some, uh, very low residential. And if we take a look at what's being proposed here, we're essentially reflecting the exact same zoning districts in all of the residential areas. The only change being, uh, this area right here being converted to this, uh, commercial mix, uh, coastal mixed use designation. So this would allow for uh, additional housing development that is not authorized right now in the coastal zoning, but is authorized in our, um, land use code. So catch up, catching up to the land use code here. The rest of these designations, these are all very low-density, um, residential parcels you see along, uh, you know, Old Arcata Road. Uh, we're not proposing to change those, concentrating the additional density in the downtown. Uh, not in these areas that, you know, are more, or more subject to sea level rise and whatnot. Making sense so far? Uh, this little piece right here, we're not proposing to change anything, uh. So you can see there's complete parity. It's still going to be residential low. This area, commercial ag, no, I'm sorry, ag and coastal ag. So no zoning changes there. Similarly, over here next to, um, the Bloomfoot School and, uh, uh, St. Mary's. We're not proposing any changes in zoning designation. Okay, but here's where it gets, uh, you know, controversial and fun. So now that I've lulled you to sleep, uh, with all those zoning designations, uh, perk up for a second because we've got something dramatic that we're proposing here. Okay, so right now, this is, uh, uh, 27th Street. And this is Spear and Alliance. So you kind of oriented there, uh. This area is actually quite built out, fairly dense, uh, under current scenario. In fact, if you look at some of these, uh, properties, uh, so for example, uh, you know, this, this property here, uh, residential low-density, it's, uh, point two-two acres. Uh, so 9,400 square feet, larger than our, you know, average residential low-density parcel. Uh, and in general, the parcel size is larger here. Uh, but I think that when we zoned these originally, we thought, you know, hey, look, this is a transitional area. And we have residential very low density. These were intended to have 20,000 square foot parcels uh, in this area. But again, if we turn all the zoning off and look at the actual density, the build-out, you know, some of these are quite, you know, quite dense. Some still have, you know, a lot of open space, but a lot of these parcels are, you know, pretty darn dense already. So even though we call them residential very low, uh, you know, they're, they're already built out. And so what we're proposing here, uh, at the staff level is to recognize the additional density that's in this area and, uh, take advantage of it. You know, basically give people the opportunity to, to densify. We're going from residential low-density here and residential very low-density here. And the proposal is to make that residential medium density, so up to 15 units per acre on these. This change would, uh, free up several parcels that, you know, would like to develop, but it's, uh, frankly, too challenging to develop in, in the coastal zone right now. So for example, this parcel here has changed hands several times. Um, the, uh, water line goes through the center of it. It's in the coastal zone to really make, take, take advantage of a residential low-density parcel. This, uh, approximate 20,000 square foot, I think, um, parcel. I'm sorry, I was way off. 70,000 square foot parcel would have to do a subdivision. And every single owner who, you know, for my entire career, there's been different owners. Every single owner comes in here and ultimately hits a brick wall. Uh, converting this to, uh, whoops, residential medium would allow them to develop it without having to do a subdivision. They could just develop on the existing footprint. Similarly, this provides for a lot more housing than we will ever get here through any means, whether it's through subdivision or, you know, other, uh, other changes. And so I really want some feedback. I'm going to take a, take a step back here and, um, you know, see what, what your thoughts are going from residential very low to residential medium. Jump in.
Um, um, on that parcel behind the pump station, um, you know, we've, we've had several, uh, proposals there that the existing neighbors were pretty freaked out about. And then we also had the water district with, um, an easement that, uh, they wanted wide and the city wanted narrow. And I'm, I'm just wondering if you could tell us what, um, the, the status of those easements are and, and why, uh, putting that in as medium density would help address those problems because my sense is that they were as much at issue as, the, the problems of subdividing and the neighbors' objections.
Um, yeah, this proposal wouldn't resolve, uh, neighbor objections, uh, NIMBYs or, um, you know, existing easements. They'd still have to build around those existing easements. What this would do is provide a, you know, uh, pathway for, uh, additional residential development in the city of Arcata. We're having to get more creative. You know, as, as time goes on, uh, I don't know if you recall when we were doing the uh, vacant sites inventory for, you know, our housing element, but we currently do not have enough vacant sites to meet our regional housing needs allocation. And the, um, the state certified our housing element contingent on us bringing back upzones and rezones to show that we could meet that, uh, the housing allocation. And so this is completely consistent with and called for in our housing element to, you know, find these sites where we can upzone. So is the gateway plan, for example. Um, but it's, it's kind of a question of, um, you know, if we're not going to do it here, where are we going to do it? Because we need to provide for, you know, these sites. Another alternative, I mean, this is a nice contrast. In fact, uh, immediately across the street and outside of the coastal zone is a fairly large parcel. This one also has constraints with the, uh, water district's easement, et cetera. Um, and this one's in a Williamson Act contract uh, for, for agricultural, uh, tax benefit. This is, I mean, if there's, you know, there's a few sites that are real obvious as you zoom out and look at the city of Arcata that haven't been built yet. And part of the reason they haven't been built yet is because they're not zoned appropriately. And so this is, this is the challenge we find ourselves facing. You know, do we want to take these areas that are, you know, what's, what's our first move? To take areas that are already, several parcels have high-density, uh, development on them? And just recognize that high-density development and say everyone else in this neighborhood can do the same thing? Do we want to start, uh, you know, working with property owners to cancel their Williamson Act contracts and upzone vacant parcels? Um, you know, do we want to, you know, encourage accessory dwelling units? Do we want to, you know, encourage and facilitate high-density development near the downtown? So, you know, we're kind of taking a, you know, multiple, uh, options approach uh, for some of this, but you know, this is something that, you know, it seems like a, you know, really rich opportunity for the city to take advantage of. Uh, you know, an area that still has development potential, uh, on the one hand, and also reflects the density that we're proposing uh, as existing non-conforming on the other hand.
David, why didn't you continue down Spear with that designation?
Um, you know, I don't have a good reason for that. Um, it was mostly because, uh, these are, you know, incremental steps for one, I guess, and for another, um, I felt like this was a pretty bold move already. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to change this to residential medium as well. I think there's a lot of good. The same rationale applies to this neighborhood, quite frankly. I mean, I, you know, when you look at these, uh, these ones in particular, you know, near the, the corner. I mean, it doesn't get any denser than this on a, you know, one-story, uh, development. So I think that's a good question. Okay, um, the other small change here is that, uh, commercial general in the corner here where the Patriot is, uh, going from commercial general to commercial mixed use probably won't have a on-the-ground impact for, you know, some, quite some time to come. Uh, but this would, you know, authorize other uses that aren't currently allowed on the site, uh, mixed uses. So that is, that is basically what we're looking at right now so far for zoning, um. Does anybody want to go back to a specific area or, you know, kind of pick, pick brains and deliberate on, on different, uh, ideas around these changes? You want to talk about expanding this commercial medium, I mean coastal medium? Go for it, I sure.
Hi, hi, sir, sir, sorry to be, um, maybe asking a little too many questions, but could you explain again how the gateway, plan and the coastal rezoning are gonna, are, are going to interact with each other in your mind? Um, because you, you explained that until the gateway plan is adopted and the rezoning pursuant to that happens, that the local coastal program wouldn't actually, um, be changing any zoning. And so the, the sequencing there, um, is, is a little squirrely. I wonder if you could explain that again?
Sure. Yeah, what we're proposing here is that the coastal zone designations be overlays. And so they're subject to the underlying zoning designation as well. And so for example, this is a heavy industrial parcel right here. Uh, if this were adopted tomorrow, this would have two designations, uh, that build on one another. Uh, and we do this with all kinds of different, uh, uh, overlay zones. The cannabis innovation zone, for example, is an overlay zone. Um, it's industrial limited underlying, and then it's got an overlay of cannabis, uh, innovation that allows you to do uses that you can't do in other industrial limited zones. And so with a similar principle, we would have, uh, on these parcels, industrial limited or industrial general underlying zoning and coastal mixed use as an overlay. The coastal mixed use, um, provides for all kinds of activities, all kinds of uses that the underlying industrial limited doesn't allow for. And so if someone were to come in and say, hey, look, you know, I really want to do uh, mixed-use building on, you know, this, this property right here. We would look at it and say, well, it's got an underlying zoning of industrial limited. And so you're, you're limited to those uses currently. And they'd say, but hey, it's got this coastal mixed-use zoning designation as well, and that says I could do a mixed use. And we'd have to tell them then, well, I'm sorry, because you still are subject to the underlying zoning as well. For now, but we're working on this great plan that's gonna, you know, um, gonna do, do you favors and, and do the community favors too. And they'll say, really? What's that? I'll tell them, well, look, right now, this is industrial zone property. But it's also mixed-use zone property. We're working on this Arcata Gateway plan right now that's going to convert this industrial to more of a mixed use. And this overlay then would be consistent with a mixed-use development. And so the sequencing would be adopt the local coastal program. We're, you know, we're working, we're getting close on that one. Adopt the local coastal program with this overlay zone. Whatever land use changes, amendments that we need to make to our underlying zoning, whether it's in this Arcata Gateway area or elsewhere in the zoning district, we can do that uh, afterwards, because then those will be consistent with the new local coastal program zoning designations. And it'll be a simple matter to turn those over to the, uh, to the Coastal Commission and say, look, this is what we did. Once the local coastal program is amended to have this, uh, coastal, coastal mixed-use designation, when the underlying gateway plan is amended in here, they'll be completely consistent. Again, similar to the way that the residential low-density parcels in this neighborhood are completely consistent. They're residential low in the land use code and they have an overlay coastal residential low. So we'd have a similar thing happen where you'd have consistent uses. Now, if the, if the sequence, sequence, sequencing goes the other way around, if we adopt the gateway plan first, we would have the reverse situation happen where the under, the new underlying zoning in the gateway wouldn't be effective in the coastal zone. In the coastal zone, it's still going to say, you know, that these are industrial, general or industrial limited. So our zoning for the gateway will be effective for the purposes of the city, but it won't be effective for the purposes of the coastal zone. We'll have to come back in and make this change afterwards to make it effective. So I, I, I'm assuming we're going to have the coastal program done before. I'm thinking that'll be done sometime in the next year, max. Uh, but the gateway won't be done for another approximate two years. So I think that's the way the sequencing is going to happen. And we'll just have a time, uh, you know, time difference between when those two codes are effective. In fact, we already have that exact situation on these parcels right here on the northern side of the, the coastal zone. These are in the Creamery District zoning overlay zone. So these have an IL two designation associated with them. So they've got IL in the coastal zone and they've got an IL two, uh, Creamery District combining zone that was never adopted in the coastal zone. And so that zoning designation is not effective in the coastal zone right now. So it's, it's just, you know, it's a matter of timing and there's no way to resolve that timing because there's two, two authorities that have to approve it. Our city council has to say, yes, this is what we want to have happen. And then we take that to the Coastal Commission. And so our local adoption has already happened. As far as we're concerned, it's done. Uh, but the Coastal Commission then has to approve it. So there's, when you're working with the LCP, there's always a time gap between approvals.
So in that coastal gateway area, would you assume that the design criteria um, and, and the form-based code, uh, types of things that would types of things that would eventually be included in the Gateway would also be proposed as part of the local coastal program? Or would, would they just be backloaded into the Gateway Plan under that mixed-use rubric? I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out if the local coastal program is, is actually going to be informative enough of what's really going to happen in that area?
I think we're ultimately going to have to come back and amend another overlay zone into the local coastal program that has, you know, a couple of basic differences between what would be allowed in the coastal mixed use and what would be allowed in the larger district. Because remember, we have coastal mixed use scattered throughout that isn't in the district. And so we don't want those to be completely commensurate like the residential low-density parcels are. We aren't proposing to have six-story buildings out here in this, you know, Sunny Bray area, whereas they are quite conceivable within this area here.
Okay, thanks.
So David, this is just an early introduction to these concepts, is that correct?
Yeah, so if you have, you know, feedback, things you want us to consider, things you're interested in, you want us to bring in more information back, you know, this is a great time to get that out. You're going to see this multiple more times. We'll dig into a lot more detail. You know, we'll explore other ideas, you know, both, you know, with the community through probably town halls and things like that, as well as meetings like yours, like, do we want to expand this to incorporate all of this? We're not touching any of the ag parcels. Ag is sacred, you know, sacred in the coastal zone. So we're proposing to leave those alone. But these theoretically could be amended.
In the peninsula, South G neighborhood, are you getting feedback from neighbors down there about this new usage?
We haven't, we haven't talked about this with the community yet. I mean, this is literally just hot off the presses. So we haven't talked about this specific concept yet. I guess I should say, we've talked about it in concept. We haven't shown people the detail. But certainly, you know, folks that, you know, I've shared this concept with of trying to, you know, create adaptation pathways through, you know, financial incentive, you know, are intrigued by the idea. A lot of the times, we sort of stop and are thinking at, you know, use the land use regulation to bludgeon someone into adaptation. It could be that, you know, instead, you know, if we said, hey, look, you know, maybe the city wants to develop a policy, not right now, we want to make sure that we have ample housing to, you know, relocate folks, but maybe it wants to go in and, and, you know, maybe block by block say, in fact, these are all going to be vacation rentals. We want these to be more like a hotel. Maybe we come in and say, hey, look, you know, this area right here would be great for an RV park. And then you take the people who are living there, or the people who own that property, who, you know, basically have a, literally a sinking investment, one that they're going to lose value on over time as sea levels rise. And you give them a near-term, you know, investment in maybe an RV park that are, you know, generate a lot more revenue potentially than, you know, than housing with there. And it eliminates the infrastructure, you know, gives them incentive to demolish the structures and move that waste off the property in an appropriate manner, transition that use. You know, because, you know, basically what's going to happen if we don't incentivize the conversion of these properties over time is that the, the community is going to get stuck with, you know, a bunch of buildings that we need to figure out how to demolish and remove.
Looks like great concepts to me. Anybody have any input here?
Maybe I could ask the targeted question about how people feel about expanding this CRM to these properties here?
I'm all for it. John?
Let's jump off the cliff. Let's do it.
Yeah, I would support increasing density, residential density, wherever it's feasible. This area looks pretty difficult to do any, anything with. But if we could throw the possibility out there, I think it would be a step forward.
Okay. All right. Well, that's all I have prepared. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. And there's nobody in attendance at this point to take public comment. But I did receive one public comment from Colin Fisk in his capacity with the transportation organization that he works with. And even though this wasn't necessarily the subject of tonight, in the, in the chapter that I gave you, our parking policy or parking standards are in there. And he encourages the city to continue to use no minimum parking thresholds as we've currently got in there. The Coastal Commission has already given us a little bit of pushback on this because they want to make sure that there's places for visitors to park and then go explore the coast. And so part of what we're doing to address that is to bring the Coastal Commission kind of a map of our existing parking in the coastal zone at coastal access points to demonstrate that, you know, we don't really need new minimum thresholds. And that, you know, having minimum parking standards kind of generates infrastructure for cars instead of alternative vehicles, alternative modes. So that's just a quick update on, on his, his thoughts.
Kimberly, please.
Commissioner White?
I just really wanted to say these maps are really helpful for me. It's not necessarily my forte. Having those overlays really helped me a lot, so thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it didn't happen sooner.
And when will they be available to us as PDF or some other form?
Yeah, I don't want to make any promises because I don't have the ability to, you know, make it so. But I will endeavor to get those to you as soon as possible here. Our, you know, Brian, Brian Kang is, you know, he and I are working together to get these maps ready for public consumption.
Okay, does that close that business item?
Yeah, I have nothing more prepared for it.
Okay, thank you, and we'll look forward to revisiting it in the near future. Correspondence and communications?
I, I have only two things. One is that the Planning Commission made a recommendation on the Formula Restaurant Ordinance. Couple meetings, or, yeah, last meeting. And the council took that up at its last meeting last week and introduced the ordinance, and they're set to adopt it on the 16th. And then I also wanted to share this with, you know, the commission and the, and the community. Let's see. You see my, my email here?
Nice.
This was, this was today. Crabs are warming up for a baseball game. I just, it made me happy. I had to share it. So the crabs are playing. They played all weekend. Folks can get tickets online right now. And I think for games through, through, through June, and they're hoping into July that we'll actually be able to have tickets at the entrance, but right now, the only way to get them is online. So, go craps, go.
I had a quick question, and I think that maybe Judith could speak to it more, but there's going to be a presentation for Valley West with the HSH student interns, right? And I think it was happening this evening, but that there's going to be a link available for anybody to access through DLO. Is that right? You know Judith? You're on mute.
I, I think there's something like that. I'm not sure what the schedule of is. That was, you know, it's, it's not, I don't think it's formal city business. But the organization, I think, has now a little website, and, and people can go look for it there. I believe they were also going to be trying to do it in English and in Spanish.
That's correct. And it's a CUNA.
You muted, Commissioner White. It's who?
Humboldt Cooperative, and it'll be CUNA, Comunidad, Minidad, del Mar de Arcata.
Okay.
Thank you for sharing that. David, I'm wondering if there's going to be a groundbreaking on the, oh, the Open Door Clinic property is, seems overdue.
I, I am sure that there will be one. To my knowledge, it is not yet scheduled. In fact, unless it got scheduled today, it's not scheduled because I was speaking with Tori yesterday, and he said that they were starting to think about scheduling.
Okay, so they're getting there.
They're getting there. They're getting there. Also like to, this is, you know, preemptive and probably way too early, but, you know, just to start thinking about it, I'd like to try and coordinate a joint ribbon cutting between the Urocanine Housing Authority 30th Street Project and the Sorrel Place, the former Isaacson project, both of which have, you know, massive investment from the state and the Cap and Trade Program, the Strategic Growth Council, and, you know, as well as the city and tax credits to provide a total of about 70 new units of affordable housing in the city of Arcata, as well as like just some fantastic public amenities. We're finally going to get the bridge across from 30th Street to, to the park, to Spiny Park over in the James Creek Meadow subdivision. Lots of improvements to buses, a new electric bus. Tons, tons of public amenities that are coming with those projects, millions and millions of dollars of public investment.
Well, thank you for updating and for your involvement. I know the city's been heavily engaged in all of this. Anybody else?
Yeah, David, have you, this came out a couple of weeks ago in regards of Governor Newsom's $1.5 billion investment into Clean California and providing funds for local communities for beautification and an assortment of different things, litter abatement projects and so forth. Is the city planning on trying to tap in some of those funds?
I'm, I'm laughing a little because my colleague Emily Benvee attended, you know, debrief on the funding. And I think the first word in her email was, wow. So yeah, there's, there's definitely, there's a lot of funding coming down the pike. I can't even pretend to have a full command of everything that's going on. You know, we're already drinking from a fire hose, but you know, when you've got, you know, that much going on, then let's, let's add a little bit more. I definitely think we're going to try and plug into as much of that statewide funding as we can.
Yeah, I think it's a potential great opportunity. So, yeah, it's, it's been coming down the pike, you know, during my daytime work, working for Caltrans, so a lot of things coming down the pike. So I'm just interested to see if we're going to take advantage of that. Sounds like we are, hopefully.
Do we have a study session scheduled on the 24th? And if so, do we have an agenda for that?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, Vice Chair Mayor. We do have a study session for the 24th. I was saving that for the last, and thank you for the segue. It's the 24th. We do have an agenda coming out. It's not quite prepared yet, but the two items that'll be on the agenda is the strategic and film redevelopment program. And we'll do an update on that and really give opportunity for the public to engage directly with the commission and the city council. And also for the new city council to engage directly with the commission, since you all have been, you know, studying this issue for the last four years. And then we'll also have, reserve some time at the end for the, for the art plan, the strategic art plan that my colleague DLO, colleagues DLO and Gillan have been working on. They've been doing a fantastic job, lots of public outreach, lots of connection with a bunch of artists. I think it's been a really fun and engaging opportunity for them to elevate some of the, the needs for, you know, art community and what artists need and how the city can be involved in advancing that. So those will be the two topics that we discuss. And I did send out a placeholder reservation for your calendars for that event. And to that, we could cancel the Planning Commission meeting that happens that week if you'd like to. I don't think we have any business scheduled at this point, so that would be the meeting for the 22nd.
And this joint meeting is on the 24th?
24th.
Which is a Thursday, is that what I'm hearing?
It is a Thursday.
Do you need us to vote on canceling that, or?
You sure could, or, you know, we could cancel it if we don't have business items.
We can then leave it up.
Make, make sure and cancel it if, if you all want to.
I think we want to. Two meetings in a week sounds like a lot.
Okay, motion and a second and a majority vote would take care of that.
A motion and a second and a majority vote? Okay, let's do it. Do we have a motion?
Cancel the 22nd meeting.
Okay, we had a motion from Judith and a second from John, I think.
Okay, Commissioner Barstow?
Aye.
Commissioner White? Commissioner Figaro? Commissioner of the State of Arkansas? Vice Chair Mayor? And Chair Tegy?
Okay. Anything else for correspondence and communications? I just have one question. Commissioner Figaro, what's your first name?
Christian.
Christian, okay. You're the only one whose name's not on the screen.
I can change that next time.
Thank you. And with that, I think we can adjourn. Good night all.